We will get started in two minutes. Good evening and welcome. With Veterans Day yesterday, it is very appropriate that we have a veteran to lead us tonight in our pledge of allegiance. Director Klein?
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to call this meeting to order November 12, 2009. Mrs. Martin, roll call vote for roll call.
All members present.
Do I have a motion to adopt the agenda?
So move.
Second? Is there a second?
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Presentation. The high school students of the month for November are Sydney Er and Kyle Wall. This award is sponsored jointly by the Fredericksburg and Jonestown Lions Clubs, and each recipient will be recognized at a future meeting of the Lions Club. The middle school student of the month for November is Brooke Biebersdorfer. This award is sponsored by the Northern London County Rotary Club, and each recipient will be recognized at a future meeting of the Rotary Club. Are any of those individuals here this evening? Okay, if not, we'll move on to our student board representative, Hannah Columbo.
Hello, everybody. Hello. Hello, everybody. Thank you for giving me your attention. Today I will give a brief recap of the trunk or treat, the powder puff, pep rally, king of hearts, and class wars for Christmas. Trunk or treat was a trick-or-treating event held by the FBLA. The student council had given up, had signed up to be one of the many clubs and organizations that would go out and hand out candy. It was a huge success for FBLA, and they want to thank everybody who came out to help out and trick-or-treat. It wouldn't be a success without them. Powder puff will not be rescheduled. We have made many attempts to reschedule, only simply have run out of warm weather and time. The pep rally is running smoothly. We have court applications coming through for king of hearts court. We will have boys of the student body apply to be on court. We will have all of their chairs picked out for the event soon. For class wars, the reward is the sock hop. The administration has given us the amazing opportunity to construct what happens on half-day for break. We are planning on doing a half an hour and a half pep rally. Forty-five minute group activities will be in each grade, and then stations for the students that they can choose from. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Hannah, for your time. We appreciate those reports. Moving on to other reports, we have Dr. Messinger now. Congratulations on your dissertation. It is now official to call him Dr. Messinger, so if you will join me in round applause. Dr. Messinger.
My wife is refusing to use that term. I don't blame her. Doctor taking out the garbage is what she's told me. First, I'd like to, this is a consent item, so I'd like to talk about it here briefly. Kelly Vastic-Jones is going to be our new people services person. She comes highly regarded from Lebanon School District. She came tonight. I just wanted to introduce her. Kelly, if you would wave, say hi. Do you have your speech prepared?
I do. It's probably like an hour long.
Well, it is a pleasure to have you. I have a list of things for you to start tackling when you were able to join us, but you were a welcome addition, so thank you for being here. I also wanted to mention, this is a transfer, but just to be able to tell you publicly that we do have a new V3 coordinator. Because it's a transfer and it's not a promotion or demotion, it's not a board item, but Ms. Tara Gross will be taking over that position from these handover. She has several different certifications that I think will come into play and could be valuable for us, and as soon as we get a replacement for her classroom, we'll make that change. Want to recognize publicly, and they aren't here tonight, but two individuals that participated in states in the athletic realm, gauge crawl, who finished eighth in cross-country in the state, and Luke Spangler, who both finished seventeenth in the state, so I wanted to publicly mention that. Also, if you're looking for something to do Friday night and Saturday night, we have the Beverly Hillbillies coming up in the auditorium. Feel free to come out to that. Tonight's a special night for a couple of people here. The first thing I want to do is, PSBA actually recognizes school board members. I'm going to read this to you. "PSBA has been recognizing the contributions of dedicated local school directors with long-term service since 1983. The honor roll is the association's way of saying thank you to those individuals who exemplify leadership by giving unselfishly their time and talents for the betterment of the public schools serving students across the great Commonwealth." We have three individuals that have given eight years of service to the school board, and I would like to recognize those three individuals tonight. Those three are Rachel England, Glenn Gray, and Amy Sell. In addition to that, three of our board members are excited, almost too excited, a little disappointed in them, that this is their last meeting with us. Mrs. Sell, Mrs. England, and Mr. Brewer, they will be stepping away, and this is their last night with us. I want to thank them. It feels like it's been a year shortly working on it. No, I'm just kidding. I want to thank you for even the short period of time that I've had an opportunity to work with you. Your insights and wisdom have been greatly appreciated. And while Pat and I work on something, I want to open it up to the board if anybody has anything they'd like to say to them.
Well, I'll go ahead and say something. I just would like to thank the three of you for your time that you've spent, your encouragement, your wisdom that you have shared with all of us. I know that all of you will continue to be a resource for board members here and board members coming, so thank you, guys.
I'd like to just throw something out there. First of all, I'd like to say to Rachel, thank you for, when I was going for write-in votes, thank you for helping me to come on the board, I think. Thank you. And Amy, we were, we all joined, all three of us together. Somehow you left me behind, and you're leaving, so I'm kind of feeling a little bit of sadness here. But I look back on what we did and the changes that we've made, even though sometimes with everything going on, we're thinking, you know, did we actually do anything? And we knew what we had to do when we joined the board, and we know where we're at tonight. And wow, what a great stuff. You two should be really, really proud of everything you've done and helped us to get there. John, I've only known you a little while, but as my partner over here, we seem to go through a lot of stuff, and I've really gleaned a lot from your leadership and your perspective on things, so I thank you for your service and hopefully your friendship over the years to come. And with that, I'll end it back to you guys. If anyone else wants to say anything?
Well, so you can think fondly back about all your board meetings. We have a lamp for each of you. And after the meeting, if you were interested in cookies and some drinks, we'll have some set over there for people to socialize if you'd like. That's the end of my report.
Thank you all. It really means a lot, and personally, it's been an interesting eight years, and I'm glad to have served with all of you. And I think definitely the highlight is tonight, knowing that Dr. Messinger is here and is definitely going to do great things with the district. So good luck to you all, and that the district is in good hands. And I'll be somewhere else on Tuesday nights now. Moving on...
You're always welcome to join them.
Okay, moving on to public input session. We have two green sheets this evening. The first one was Brittany Harmon, speaking on bus drivers. Brittany, at the podium, please state your address and your name.
My name is Brittany Harmon. My name's Brittany Harmon, and I live at 20 Main Street in Omo. I would like to address the Northern Lebanon Advocate Group. Like you, I've been monitoring your page. I've concluded your page is full of half-truths and negativity, negative comments, nothing positive is ever posted. I've done some research of my own on the ones behind this page. For some reason, you feel the need to harass Stevie Fishers and their bus drivers for the district, saying they are not qualified. Do you even know what it takes to become a bus driver? What you have to do to keep your endorsements and license every four years? The process to become a bus driver takes up to three months of training with certified instructors. First, you have to go for a physical, pass this, then fill out the form to apply for a learner's permit, attend fourteen hours of classroom instruction, go to the DMV and take the general knowledge, passenger school bus and air brakes test. Only after passing these tests do you go down to the bus. Then you spend time learning the pre-trip inspection, the inside, the outside, brakes, air brakes. Once you have this down, you go on to learning how to maneuver your bus, using your mirrors to back up, make safe turnarounds, parallel park, simulate picking up children, discharging children, railroad crossings. Plus, they have to pass criminal child, criminal checks, child abuse clearances, be fingerprinted, take Act 121 class, random drug and alcohol testing. They're required six hours on road training, but they put more in than this. So I'm sure I missed some things, but you got the idea. I'd like for you to come step into their shoes, do their job. It takes great patience and concentration, the ability to adapt to many situations that can arise at any given time. They are trained to put safety first, schedule second. It's easy to sit there and judge, bash, and point fingers, but until you step into their shoes, you might want to think twice before casting your stones. Karma always comes back to bite you.
Thank you, Brittany. Our next request to address the board is Lisa McCoy, regarding weight room personnel and safety. Lisa, again, state the name and address, please.
Lisa McCoy, Bacchus, 445 South Lancaster Street. At first, I would just want to say, I think the weight room coordinator and having assistant weight room coordinators is a great idea for opening those up to the students. However, I would like some clarification in regards to the responsibilities of these persons to include the safety of the equipment as well. There has been some challenges this year already, and some students have gotten hurt and now are not able to play a sport or to be in an activity due to some faulty equipment or something not being repaired. And I would just like to know with these new positions, what the responsibilities of those personnel would be, and how we're going to make sure that the equipment is repaired or not in use so that students aren't getting hurt and we're not having more and more liability issues and more student athletes getting hurt, or any student getting hurt not being able to participate in a function.
I'll just, I'll give you the call this week. We can talk about that.
Thank you. That concludes public input session. Moving on to our agenda to item I. By notice of the president, the following action items suggest a roll call vote. You will be recorded as voting in the affirmative for demotion unless you say nay or abstain. Board members are further advised that they must publicly announce and disclose the nature of any conflict of interest before the vote on the matter is taken and file the appropriate form with the secretary of the board. Item J for board action is our consent calendar.
And this is the consent calendar that was brought to you, the committee.
Do I have a motion to accept the consent calendar? Second. Discussion on any items of the consent calendar. Mrs. Martin, roll call vote, please.
Klein?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Brewer?
Yes.
England?
Yes.
Murray?
Yes.
Ox?
Yes.
Sekali?
Yes.
Burnman?
Yes.
Sell?
Yes.
On favor, motion yes. Moving on to item L on your agenda, for board action discussion items.
We have two building requests. The first request is for community holdover volleyball. The second request is for Mr. Homer, he calls it holding man basketball, both are community events. Just to be clear, that these would be events that would be bumped if there were any school activities or youth activities that we are currently working with. Those, these would be events that would be bumped.
Do I have a motion? Second. Discussion? This is a unanimous roll call vote. You will be recorded as affirmative unless I hear nay or abstain. Nay. Mrs. Martin, result?
One nay, eight yes, one win, carry.
Thank you. Moving on to item M, reports of representative. First report, Career and Technology Center, Director Klein, alternate Director Brewer.
Okay, for the CTC, you guys each have a October newsletter, and one of the things we talked about at the last CTC meeting was potential projects. They have a whole building much like ourselves. Parking, ceiling and repairs, water supply lines, which is going to be a big one. Replacing dump truck, replacing lockers, which would cost over $100,000. The roof warranty expires in 2021. If you have a new roof, that's approximately $200,000. They have to move out all for $200,000. So I listed all that off because usually around this time, we talk about the refund we're going to be getting. They asked us if we do all these repairs that are coming up, that they're not going to send a refund check back to the home districts. And the JOC, which I'm part of, agrees with that because given it, the requesting, not many events, we don't try to flatten it out this way. So usually we talk about eighty-five, $60,000, and kind of lay it out there. That's all I have for CTC.
Thank you. If you don't mind, Director Klein, I just, you gave this tonight, and I noticed on the inside, there's new inductees recognized for academic and vocational excellence. We do have some Northern Lebanon students listed there. Zachary Corbin, auto body technology. Marshall Gundrum, auto body technology. Okay, so congratulations to those individuals for their recognition. That's certainly a great accomplishment. He's not here, is he?
No.
Okay. Well, pass that on.
He has not missed a day at school now, in two years.
Well, that's another reason to be recognized. That's great. Thank you. Anything else, Director Klein?
That's it.
Okay, moving on to intermediate unit. Director Murray?
So you all have the sheet that I placed in front of you that just lets you know what kind of events are happening and what districts are participating in those events. I also would like to highlight, as I have said to most of you, two date savers. There is a school board orientation happening on Thursday, January 30. If you need more information about that, and you didn't get the flyer, I have a copy of that here. And also, just another save the date. Fantastic event that takes place every year at the IU is the Reinventing Learning Showcase, and that's happening Wednesday, March 11. Over to those two events at the IU. Thank you.
We definitely encourage you to mark your calendars. They are always well-presented, and especially that second event is always great ideas, great innovations. Moving on to legislative, PSBA liaison, Director Sekali.
No legislative report, but I will encourage all of the non newly-elected current board members to take the same training on PSBA that newly-elected current board members will be taking. And then if anyone other than myself as well is willing to take the same training, but new board members coming on as well, I think that that would be great because then if they have questions, we know exactly what they've taken. We've taken the same thing, and we might even have questions ourselves. So I would just encourage everybody to go on to the website and look at some of those. Thanks.
If you do wish to register, I had sent a link to just one of those examples. Just contact Mrs. Martin, that's part of our dues, so it is a free service for us, and certainly lots of information. Anything else from committees or representatives? Okay, moving on to new business. Director Say, would you take this time to talk about reorganization for our meeting coming up?
Happy to. So let's, yeah, that's fine.
So let's, your say, sorry.
So let's fast forward past Thanksgiving and think about the first week of December. So the first week of December, your meeting, December 3rd, is what we call school board reorganization. Under the Public School Code, Section 4, 402, for those of you who want to go home and look it up, they require you to reorganize, and at the same time, we often get newly-elected board members who can take their seat the first Monday of December. So on December 3rd, which is the first Tuesday of that month, you will have had certified results of the election, individuals who can, who are technically ready to take their seat as of December 2nd, and will attend the board meetings. That means both of you who are going off of the board do not have to attend the meeting on December 3rd as school director, but you are welcome to sit in the public eye. We would love to have you there. So what happens at that meeting? Well, number one, we will have a script for you so that the person running the meeting knows exactly what we're going to be going through, but I'll give you a preview. The most important thing that we need for that meeting is someone called a temporary president. The temporary president is the most official and the least official president you will have all year. It's a position that lasts about 10 minutes and runs the meeting for that short period of time. It is always a member of the board that is currently seated, so it is not going to be a new member coming on and taking the oath of office. So we call those the holdover members. So one of you that's sitting here tonight, I would very much love to have volunteered to become the temporary president and run the meeting with the script I will give you, and I will sit next to you and we can get you through that process. I would ask that it be someone who does not want to be the president of the board because you will be helping us go through the election process for that individual. So I'll give you some time to think about that, I'll go through the rest of my speech, and then we can talk about who that might be. So that individual essentially runs the meeting. It is the only time in the school code when the person running the meeting, the temporary president, can give the oath of office to a new school board member. So the first thing that happens is the new board members come up. We read the results of the election, and we swear in, the new board members, and they take the oath of office. And then those people are seated, the board is complete, and they can begin to take action. The first action is for them to reorganize and elect officers. So we need to elect a president and a vice president, and they are done one after the other. Usually that's in a process where nominations were taken, so the floor is open for nominations, nominations are given, and we go through a series of votes until we are able to elect a president with five votes. That is all done publicly. It is all done with voice votes traditionally, and that process goes forward with the nominees that are listed. You are strongly encouraged to begin to talk or express your opinions about whether you want to be board president so that we can have that conversation in a really organized way when we have the public meeting. So if you have an interest and you want to know more about what that job is, you can contact Director Sell or Dr. Messinger to find out what it means to be a board officer. We then go through the same process for the vice president. We take nominations and we vote on the nominees until we secure a director with five affirmative votes. And then essentially, as soon as the president is elected, the temporary president loses their job, the president takes over, and we move through the meeting. So it's actually a relatively easy process, especially with the script that I will give you, but it involves at least having one individual. I would prefer them to present themselves now or sometime before the third, to at least run the first part of the meeting until we have a president elected. Is there anyone that's interested who knows they do not want to be an officer at the board? That is willing to say that at this time? Excellent, but are there other people who'd take my vote for you to be an officer? So if you, if you're certain you will not be nominated and you will not accept any such nomination, I would be happy to have you as the temporary president. Okay, so we will do that first thing in the meeting, to elect him as a temporary president because he has volunteered and the job is only 10 minutes. From there, please be thinking about if you want to be nominated or if you want to make a nomination, and be sure to talk to individuals that you want to nominate because we don't want nominees who don't want to serve. So we want that process to be smooth, and then I'll give you the advisement. The more you can give thought to this, the less votes we will have attempting to secure a president. I had the school district once vote 10 separate times until they were able to secure a leader. So we will do this process in public, but we'll do it in a very organized way. Any questions?
Can a board member nominate themselves?
Yes. And can vote for themselves?
If a board member would be one of the individuals for president but is not elected as president, could they then serve as a nomination for VP following?
Absolutely.
I've already received several questions, so that's why I would like to...
And a reminder, just for the role of president is one that speaks on behalf of at least five members of the board or the majority, you know, as we call it. It's an important role because it's the primary communicator between the superintendent and the board and the president. So think about that, what do you think about that? Any questions?
I would just like to add to that, as well as PSBA, the onboarding that everybody's doing, the president will also commit six months to helping new board members onboard. They encourage that commitment to be made when you take the office. There's a checklist, you've all seen it, of what the superintendent goes through with the new board members' handles of the president group.
Brooke, I have a question. Isn't there a person that receives the ballots or the nominations?
Receives the nominations for officers?
Yes.
It is not done by secret ballot, so the temporary president...
What I mean is that between now and the first day of December 3rd.
Sure.
You had some person be called and say, this is, I want to nominate so-and-so, and they keep track. It's basically less than a year.
Sure, if you have an informal nominations committee that sort of exists for the month of November, December, you can appoint someone to take that information and present that slate to the board, but you shouldn't be reorganizing outside of the public act. So you can call her and say, I'm going to recommend this person, you want to reach out to them, make sure they want to serve. Absolutely, you can have sort of a short-term nominations committee or nominations person. That's also fine.
Which you, it's you, I mean, that's just what was happening.
Whatever has you appearing in the most organized fashion and ready to elect a leader, or at least have a discussion about who the leader should be.
Clarify, I believe that nomination would go for any of the...
No, it was for president, because, yeah, we would call up and say, I want to nominate so-and-so. And then that person would sometimes reach out to the board member who's nominated and say, do you accept? So that they were, there was only one point of contact, so it wasn't a four...
As a totally acceptable practice, as long as it's not a board with you meeting and discussing it, you can provide your recommendations to a nominations chair person.
In that...
Pat is willing to accept those nominations, sure. Yeah, I'm sure that's fine, I'm not her boss, but I would say she is, she's fully capable of doing that.
In that regard, two, two questions. Could new board members, oncoming board members, as a service president or vice president, and could they be a part of being nominated, and could they be nominators?
Yes. When the individuals take the oath of office, they are fully seated board members, they are eligible to be nominated as officers on the board, and they are eligible to make nominations. I mean, in advance, they could call Pat and say, I'm interested in being an officer. They're not official on the board, and we can, we can put them on the list, so to speak. That's fine, but they're not actually members of the board until the first Monday of December after they take the oath of office and are seated on Tuesday.
I think we have all three oncoming, one, two, three.
Yes, all three are here this morning, so.
Anything else, questions? So to summarize, it sounds like the board's interest is doing a nominating process. Names will go to Mrs. Martin, and then, Mrs. Martin, between Dr. Messinger and you, we can decide how we'll reach out to those nominated candidates to confirm that. So then we'll have a slate of individuals that may to try to streamline that, that process?
Okay, any questions on how that's going to work? I would ask that nominations be part of the Thanksgiving, because then after that, it's pretty much slide right into the meeting. So be thinking and having, having that wrapped up prior to the Thanksgiving break. Good?
Guess I'm still on until December. Any other new business? Okay, just a reminder that reorganization does take place on December 3rd at 5:30, so it's almost like two meetings, your reorganization meeting, and then you go into the committee meeting following that, so please remember to come at 5:30. There are some dates to remember there for you to see. December coming up, lots of exciting things happening in our buildings for Christmas. Parent-teacher conferences coming up, Beverly Hillbillies. Anything else? If not?
How about field hockey?
Field hockey.
Section teams.
Field hockey?
Field hockey, second champions, when the districts had heartbreaking loss in double overtime. Actually, we had a couple of teams go to districts that were solid.
Great stuff happening. Means the journey.